From Hebrews chapter 2. And yet with a need to move on to what's coming. I see Hebrews chapter 2 and I can't get away from looking at it under that title of verse 3. "How shall we escape if we neglect so great salvation?" We are speaking of so great salvation. And obviously, just the fact that my sins have been forgiven and the fact that I have the hope of glory, that constitutes a great salvation. Thank God for my great salvation. But the scope here is much bigger than that. The scope here isn't just individuals. And if we only see individual salvation, we miss so great salvation. We're talking about mankind. We're back to, again, God's original purposes for the creation of mankind. Now that in itself raises some questions. And conjecture is something we've got to be careful with when we consider Scripture. But we're now in verse 7. "When God made man..." And again, what is man that God is mindful of? Certain one testified in that place. What is man? And then it goes on and it says, "And for the son of man that thou visitest him, thou madest him a little lower than the angels; thou crownest him with glory and honor, and did set him over the works of thy hand." So obviously, that is Adam and Eve's creation. In the beginning, God made them male and female. Male and female created he then. What was God's purpose in making man a little lower than the angels? Well, the Scripture doesn't necessarily tell us exactly what that purpose was. Something else that's important is to ask ourselves, when did the great rebellion in the angelic world take place? Okay? Was it before the creation of man? And if so, was the creation of man a deliberate strategy of God in order for God to deal and put down that great rebellion that began in the angelic world? Scripture is silent, you see. But the way Scripture is worded in Genesis chapter 1, that rebellion in the angelic world could have very well preceded the creation of man. And so, God makes man a little lower than the angels. And then we see in verse 9, that when we're looking at the Lord Jesus, it says there in verse 9, "But we see Jesus." It's interesting, again, why does he call him simply Jesus? What was Jesus? Jesus was his human name, okay? And not only was it his human name, who gave him the name? An angel did. An angel did. So we're dealing, again, with this issue of angels and the rebellion in the angelic world. And obviously, we're talking about the head of that rebellion, which is Satan himself, and the strategy of God. So we heard about the condescension of the Lord Jesus. Absolutely, no doubt. What a condescension that was. But it was a condescension that was the result of a deliberate strategy of God. Now how do we know that? Well, we know that from Genesis chapter 3. And in what way do we know that from Genesis chapter 3? Well, the first thing that happens technically, when man sins, you have the first great promise of salvation. And the great promise of salvation, which there in Genesis 3:15 wasn't just for Adam and Eve, it was for what? For all mankind! If man and mankind was ever going to be saved, it was going to be as a result of that provision that you read of in Genesis chapter 3, which by the way, it's at the end of the chapter that Adam himself, in responding to that promise of God concerning the seed of the woman whereby he would crush the serpent's head, Adam now names the woman an Eve. See? Her name wasn't Eve before that. And Eve meant she is the mother of all living. And so, here in chapter 2, we're talking about God's great strategy through the death of the Lord Jesus Christ in order to bring mankind to life. And to bring mankind to life through the death, burial, and resurrection of our Lord Jesus Christ, the seed of the woman himself. There's a tremendous prophecy in Genesis chapter 3, verse 15. And the scope of that prophecy is universal. It has implications for the whole universe. It has implications for the whole human race. And so, when we think of this great salvation, the first thing that we must consider ourselves is, when the Lord Jesus, verse 9, "But we see Jesus who was made a little lower than the angels," for what purpose? Tells us what there? For the suffering of death. So the cross of our Lord Jesus Christ was not an accident. And as we read here about where the Lord Jesus Christ is, we see him, don't we? We see him already crowned with glory and honor. And how was he crowned with glory and honor? He wasn't crowned with glory and honor in spite of the cross. That's a mistake! He was crowned with glory and honor because of the very strategy of the cross. It was God's very strategy for him to be made a little lower than the angels for the suffering of death. Because man had sinned. And because man had sinned and Adam had thrown it all away, suffering would be necessary in order to recover mankind. And suffering would be necessary not only to recover mankind, but suffering would be necessary if man was going to be recovered. He would have to be recovered certainly, at least to the original purpose for which he was created. And through the Lord Jesus Christ, not only has that been recovered, but something much, much greater. It wasn't just the planet. God had in mind the whole universe, you see. God had in mind the new heavens and the new earth. And God had in mind so great a salvation that one day, through the suffering of death of this one, the seed of the woman, the one made a little lower than the angels, everything would be reconciled to God. On what basis? That he tasted death for every man. The bitterness of death, the power of death, the anguish of death, the sufferings of death. No one has suffered like our Lord Jesus Christ has suffered. You put all mankind together and you put all the dying of every human being and all the suffering involved with all the dying of every human being, and it does not even come close to what the Lord Jesus suffered when he tasted death for every man. It's glorious, isn't it? And if suffering would now be the necessary pathway to glory and to the restoration of mankind, you see, then all the wonder that he gave us a captain who himself would taste death for every man and taste death for every man in order that he might bring many sons to glory. Now, in a sense, I'm getting a little ahead of myself here, but we go back to Genesis chapter 3. And you can imagine it if you're Adam. And if you're Adam and you blow it. Now, Adam understood he was the father of the human race. He certainly understood that. And we know he did because of the name he gave Eve. She's the mother of all living. If mankind was ever going to live again, you see, spiritually, if mankind was ever going to be what God had intended mankind to be, it would be possible only by way of the seed of the woman. When God made man a little lower than the angels, he did something which was strategic and wise beyond measure. And that is, he made a way for God to become human. Something angels could never become. Angels can't become human. So when did God decide that he would design Eve, the woman, in such a way that he could become human? Well, he didn't do it after Adam sinned. He did it way before, you see. And all of a sudden, here's Adam now, and he blows it entirely. And he realizes what he's plunged the human race into. And when he's plunged the whole human race into that tremendous disaster, oh so great a salvation was needed. Because that man must have put his head in his hands thinking to himself, "What have I done?" And that has parallels to us and the womans in our lives. That we've blown it so badly that we sit there and we think the whole world ends, the end of it all. There's absolutely no hope, that darkness is so dark. The tunnel is so dark, there's no way out. Oh, for the wonder of God to reveal that Adam, Adam, "I designed her in my wisdom" so that the second person of the Trinity could become human. And by becoming human, be that man that it could engage the enemy. And not only bind the strong man, but take the prisoner free. It's glorious stuff, isn't it? And so, we go back right there to Genesis chapter 3 and we see the whole scope for mankind. So then now just imagine this seed of the woman. Picture him the very moment he was first manifest in the flesh. There he was. And you look at him and you think to yourself, "A vulnerable... How helpless..." How vulnerable was he? How helpless was he? Well, he needed to be fed, didn't he? He needed to be changed. He needed to be carried. He needed to be protected from danger, didn't he? "Oh, don't let the weakness fool you." He was none other than God manifested in the flesh. Even then, he was God's wisdom. He was God's strategy for the destruction of the enemy and for the reconciliation and the restoration of mankind. Back to God's purposes for which he created man in the first place. And so, Hebrews chapter 2 is filled with wonderful things, isn't it? The Lord Jesus. And again, to think of that human name, we see Jesus already. Mankind might be in trouble. And it is in trouble. And you might think yourself and find yourselves to be in difficult situations and in deep trouble. But oh, thank God for the wonder of the provision that God has made. And through the person of our Lord Jesus Christ and his being made a little lower than the angels. All the wonderful wisdom of God, all the strategy of God whereby, again, in mankind, mankind could do something though lower than angels that angels could never do. They can't marry, they can't reproduce. Man can do both. And not only can he do that, man could die. And the Lord Jesus being sinless, yet died. And we really don't know that an angel could ever die in the way that a man dies. All the wonder again of the strategy and the marvel of what God has done. Bad as mankind is and the troubles that mankind is in, God hasn't given up hope for mankind. He hasn't given up his plan for mankind. And herein is the thrust of this chapter. And to a people who were ashamed, who were people who were embarrassed because they had stepped out and they had come out and they had believed publicly in Jesus, the man who was the hope of all mankind and ascribed glory and honor and divinity to that man. And Hebrews chapter 2 is telling us, "We've got nothing to be ashamed of because in him and him alone is the hope of the entire human race, not just the individual." And this is something glorious and this is something wonderful. And it ties back into chapter 1 again, when we thought of the Lord Jesus maintaining and upholding. He is not just carrying the thing. He is conveying it to its final fulfillment. And that fulfillment will be that he himself, as we read earlier in 1 Corinthians chapter 15, is going to take this universe after every enemy has been put down and every enemy has been defeated and this universe has been thoroughly and completely reconciled to God. And he will turn it over to the Father. A sinless universe without spot, without blemish, and the new heavens and the new earth will come out of it. And oh, what a wonder it is that we have the hope of glory where we shall reign with the Lord Jesus and we with him shall govern and administer that glorious, sinless, perfect, beautiful fulfillment of all God's creative purposes. A universe without sin, without pain as we know it, without tears, without disappointments, perfectly reconciled to God through this tremendous strategy of Jesus being made a little lower than the angels. That was possible only because of God's great wisdom and foreknowledge, even in his design of the human race and making the human race a little lower than the angels. Whereby God now on human terms could engage the enemy and bring the enemy out and destroy him who had the power of death and do so through death. And through that death, like he himself said, "Except the kernel of corn fall into the ground and die, it remains alone. But if it died, it bring forth much fruit." So again, another thought here is with these thoughts of the humanity of the Lord Jesus, that he is not ashamed to call them brethren. And that deserves meditation and a little contemplation as well. Why is he not ashamed to call us brethren? Because he's not worried about being embarrassed by doing so. In what way? Well, see him. "Oh, tell me, describe to me the majesty of the glory and the honor that Jesus Christ has crowned with now." Can you even begin to contemplate it? Do you believe it? "I believe it." "Do I get it?" "Do I know all of it?" "I believe it, but I guarantee you, we have no clue. We have no clue." And yet, how is it possible that he from man is not ashamed to call himself your brother and my brother? Because he is fully human. And not only is he fully human, but he was constituted and made by God and appointed by God the captain of the salvation of the many sons whom he's bringing to glory. And in order for him to become the captain of the many sons that he's bringing to glory, well, what was the primary element that was involved in bringing sons to glory? Suffering. Suffering. And I tell you, you go into Matthew's Gospel and you have places there where you have a scribe, a religious person that comes to him and says to him, "Lord, I will follow you anywhere." And the Lord Jesus responds to him and says, "Listen, foxes of holes and birds have nests, but the son of man has nowhere to lay his head on this planet." What did he mean by that? What he meant by that is he was here on a journey. And it's interesting how when you come to the end of the Lord Jesus' life, how he himself summed up his mission to his apostles. And in order for you to get the gist of it and how he summed up his entire mission to his apostles, read of it in John chapter 16, just for a minute, please. John chapter 16. He says this. Verse 28. John 16. "I came forth from the Father, and I'm coming to the world; again, I leave the world and go to the Father." That was the summation of his mission. "I came forth from the Father, and I'm coming to the world; again, I leave the world and go to the Father." And what was the purpose of that mission? Hebrews 2 tells him. "In order to bring many sons to glory." And he turns to that scribe and he says, "Foxes of holes and birds have nests; I don't have where to lay my head." This journey, following me, is a journey that... There's no ultimate goal for it here on this planet, you know. There's no ultimate goal for it here in this life, you know. It's a following him to glory. And all the sufferings involved, how did he get to glory? And again, I repeat, not in spite of the cross, but by way of the cross. It was through suffering. And if now we have to follow him on that path, that path to glory that like Peter will say, that he left for us footsteps to follow, that when he was reviled, he reviled again. When he was threatened, he didn't retaliate. When he suffered, see, he didn't reciprocate with suffering. And all the wonder of the grace of God. And now we have again the grace of God. Tasted death, tasted suffering, tasted the bitterest of it. Why? Because he's not ashamed to call us brethren. He knew what it was like to hunger. He knew what it was like to be tired. He knew what it was like to be lonely. He knew what it was like to have a broken heart. He knew what it was like to suffer. Not just for atonement, but for what it means to live for God in a wicked, fallen world under satanic dominion. And he therefore, God ordained him, our captain. And in order to be our leader, someone that we could trust in, someone that could elevate the hope in the heart of mankind to believe in a purpose beyond this fallen world, beyond our sin, beyond this mystery, he selected a leader and a captain who himself experienced suffering to the greatest and bitterest degree that death and suffering could ever impose on one. So that he might be the captain. And wherefore, even now in that glory, when the Lord Jesus has said, "These are my brethren," that's in Matthew's chapter 13. And you remember again what section that's in. And it's in that same section of, "Whose son is he?" And now, he is going to say, not only, "Whose son am I?", but, "Who's my family?" They came to him and they say, "Your mother and your brethren are outside; they seek for you." And he said, "Who is my mother? Who is my brother? Who is my sister? Then that do the will of my Father, which is in heaven, the same is my mother and my brother and my sister." Blessed Savior, blessed captain of our salvation, you see. And he's not ashamed. He's not worried about someone or even some angel getting up there and saying, "Listen you, look at you and all your glory, and you call them your brothers?" Why? Because they are my brothers, they are my sisters. Because by my tasting death for every man, they came to believe and put their hope in the Father who sent me to be the captain of their salvation and that I through the suffering of death might bring many sons to glory. Wonderful, isn't it? Our high priest. He's able, you know. He can bring us through. And so, we come to the end of chapter 2. And again, you're ashamed? He's talking to these professing Jew. You've got nothing to be ashamed of. You've got nothing to be ashamed either in the greatness of the salvation nor in the Savior himself that provides it. And again, how beautiful and how glorious it is that the name of Jesus is mentioned here. The name of his humanity that was given to him at his birth and was given to him by the instruction of an angel. No angel will dare rise up and say, "You have no right to call them your brethren." We are, by his own declaration, his brethren. Wherefore, in all things, verse 17, "It behooved him to be made like unto his brethren, that he might be a merciful and a faithful high priest in things pertaining to God." That we're all ignorant of. That Adam had thrown it all away. We know nothing of it, you know. And we've already discussed and we've already mentioned several times that all interpretations of God without the Son are lies. They're false, they're delusional. In fact, Peter makes reference to it in his epistles, you know. And you remember what happened to Peter when the Lord Jesus first announced what his mission was? His mission was to go to Jerusalem, to die, to be rejected, and on the third day, rise again in order to bring many sons to glory. And that concept that God could die? That God would die? Or that if God was for him, God would let him hang on this cross and die? Foolishness! And yet, the deception of that lie, that that's not what God is like, is so powerful on human thinking that when Peter heard it, he said, "Lord, that will never happen to you." And he had to rebuke him and say, "Get thee behind me, Satan; for thou savest not the things which be of God, but the things which be of men." And Peter knew what it was like, you see, to be saved from that lie because he denied the Lord. He didn't believe, did he? And he denied the Lord. He became ashamed of such a Savior. He became afraid of being identified with him in this fallen world. And as a result, denied him not once, not twice, but three times and denied him with every possible means of convincing those that saw him that he wasn't a believer. All the while, he was a believer. Can you be recovered from something like that? If you'd been Peter, do you think you could ever be recovered from something like that? And so, again, this thought about dying, you see, not being afraid of death. Listen, if there was something you could do that would cause God to separate himself from you, you'd do it in your life. You'd do it now, just like Peter did it. You ain't gonna do it when you die, you know. And if there's nothing that you've done, and I'm sure every one of you can give me a testimony of something you've done, probably never even shared it with anybody or thought. Some great sin in your life. I'm talking about a Christian, I'm not even talking about non-believer. And tell me, when you cried out to God believing that Christ died for your sins and you cried out to God for restoration, was he separated from you? Or was he there for you? That's our confidence that death will never separate us from the love of God. Because if in life we couldn't do anything for him to separate himself from us, it's saddled, man. Dying ain't gonna do it. Blessed be his name. Dying ain't gonna do it, blessed be his name. And Peter learned the lesson bitterly, didn't he? When he writes about it later in his epistle, he says, for we have not. Declared unto you cunningly devised fables. When we made known unto you the power and glory of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. What were the cunningly devised fables? All human concepts of God without the Son. What Judaism had become, what the religious leaders of Israel had become, you see. That Jesus, we're gonna take him and we're gonna nail him to a cross and we're gonna rid ourselves of him. He's a liar, he's an imposter. Oh, blessed God, through the suffering of death, the strategy of the cross. He, by way of that, has been crowned with glory and honor. In order to be the captain of bringing us through suffering to glory. Blessed Savior, blessed be his name, blessed high priestess. Fully constituted to succor, to help. To reconcile all things to God. All things meaning the whole universe through. And turn that universe over to the government of redeemed people. Like you and me, who through a personal process of reconciliation. Through the Lord Jesus himself. And a process of training in life under his high priesthood and his captaincy. Have been molded and matured in the knowledge of God, you see. To be conformed to his own likeness. And we shall reign with him. And so, from there, it turns over into chapter three. And it turns over into chapter three, and on the basis of this whole presentation. He says, now consider, holy brethren, our takers of the heavenly calling. The apostle and high priest of our profession, Christ Jesus. Then it compares him to Moses. And why would he compare him to Moses? He compares him to Moses because he's trying to highlight for us what Numbers, chapter twelve says of Moses. And here was Moses, and Moses was the apostle of their confession, of Israel's confession. He was the apostle and the high priest with Aaron of Judaism, you see. And it was by him that God fed the people, he brought water to the people, he nourished the people. He led the people out of Egypt and so on. He, he led the people and he led the nation in the keeping of the Passover, he brought them to the Red Sea. I mean, I tell you, what that nation and what those people owed Moses. And yet, when you read the account of the Old Testament. All they did was grumble. All they did was murmur at that man. All they did was criticize that man. Ungrateful lot that they were. I don't know about you, how many times you get up on a Sunday morning? When on the first day of the week, it was the apostles' custom to come together to break bread. And you get up and you don't feel like going to break bread. I tell you, and here's Moses, and I, I mean, they all knew what the nation did to Moses. And even in Numbers, chapter twelve, they had the audacity, let's just read that for a moment, please, Numbers, chapter twelve. To criticize the man's personal life with none of their business, none of their business. And he married apparently a black woman. They didn't like it. And so, verse one, Miriam and Aram spake against Moses because of the Ethiopian woman whom he had married, for he had married an Ethiopian woman. And they said, hath the Lord indeed spoken only by Moses? Hath he not spoken also by us? And the Lord heard it. Now watch the comment regarding Moses. Now the man Moses was very meek above all the men which were upon the face of the earth. How did that man not lose his temper with those people? How did that man love those people? How did that man put up with those people? How did that man put up with even his own sister? Even his own brother? Criticizing him, messing with his personal life, none of their business, finding anything. To grumble and complain about the man. And yet, he was the meakest man all. What way was he meek? Well, Hebrews gives you insight into it, it tells you that um. Verse two, who was faithful to him that appointed him, that's the Lord Jesus. Why did the Lord Jesus go to the cross for you and me? But it wasn't first for you and first for me. He went to the cross for you and me, he tasted death for every man because he was being faithful to him that appointed him. And that's a very important thing to get a hold of. Back to strategy, was it condescension? Yes, it was, but there's also strategy here and being made a little lower than the angel. For the suffering of death. Because that was the death stroke of the victory, sorry buddy, that was the death stroke, he was probably falling asleep. Huh, of the victory over Satan. And so, he was faithful to him that appointed him, as also Moses was faithful to all God's house. Why? For this man was counted worthy of more glory than Moses. Inasmuch as he who hath builded the house hath more honor than the house. Moses was counted faithful, verse five, and barely Moses was faithful in all his houses as a servant. For a testimony of those things which were to be spoken after, denied glory, has to do with hope. It has to do with the fact that Moses was a believer. And even back in that day, he believed the promises of Genesis three fifteen. And he believed that he himself in that sense will be a model and a prototype. And he was that prophet sent by God to the people to bring the knowledge of God to the people. In order for the people to believe and dare to believe there was a God who loved them but to bring them out of Egypt. And God appointed Moses to that task of bringing the people out. Even though they murmured and they complained, and all the wonder of it was, Moses was faithful to that task. Because of his faith in the things it represented in the future. And he was faithful to the God who appointed him. But ultimately, Moses broke down, didn't he? He got to that point there near Canis Barnea, after forty years of it all in the desert. That he got angry with the people, he was so fed up with the people, he said, must we fetch water out of the rock for you rebels? And the point is, our Lord Jesus Christ will never break down. Blessed be God, he'll never break down. And he'll never break down until he, because he won't break down. Will bring God's people into their promised inheritance. We don't see all things yet put under man. We see a lot of problems for humanity and we see a lot of problems still for ourselves. But we see Jesus Christ, he's already there. And oh, what a step. The ultimate fulfillment of God's program for mankind has already taken in the man, Christ Jesus. Already having tasted death, come out of death and himself sat down at the right hand of God. As the captain and high priest of the many sons he's bringing to glory. He, blessed be his name, will not break down. Until he accomplishes the whole thing for mankind. Blessed be his.